Looks like we have a quorum. Thank you, Chris. So we'll get started on the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, July 14th, 2022. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the governor's February 12, 2022 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the planning board will be conducted by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public. And or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so by following the instructions on the top of the agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address the board on any item that requires a vote at the time before the vote votes. The board votes on that item, such residents will be allowed as much time as the proponents the item is permitted to have. And we have been doing that by observing the participants who are in the meeting and monitoring for raised hands. This meeting is being recorded and we will start with a roll call. Attendance of the members who are participating tonight, Pedro Pachano.
I'm here.
Jeremy Ega. Malcolm Vick.
Here.
Jonathan Hankin.
I'm here.
Brandy Nelson here. All right, the first item on our agenda is a Form A, the land at Zero Park Street on Route 183 on the east bank of Rising Pond, being a portion of the lands identified as parcel eight on Assessor map number five, Mr. Rembold, are you sharing something? Yes.
Yes, this is Chris, so I'm sharing the screen now. So I'll go ahead and represent this application since it has to do with the town. This plan is prepared by Forest State Land Services Surveyor for us in this case. The application is to create this parcel one that you see on the screen of 2,228 square feet. From land that is currently owned by General Electric, they own all that land on the west and east bank of Rising Pond. So this is from the east bank of the pond, just on the west side of Park Street Route 183. So this this parcel, this parcel one, it's not a building lot, it will be conveyed to the town. And combined with that parcel immediately to the north, which is where the town's Risingdale sewer pump station is. So it's a new lot, not a building lot, and we believe it's entitled to endorsement.
All right, board members, so do we have any questions on the application?
Seems highly controversial to me.
Would anyone like to make a motion to endorse?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Malcolm. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote on the matter. Pedro, what's your vote?
Hi.
Jeremy, what's your vote?
Hi.
Malcolm, what's your vote?
Hi.
Jonathan, your vote?
Hi.
And I'll vote I as well. All right, Chris. Did you have to pay the fee? He's very serious.
What's up?
We're just, we're just asking about whether or not you have the fee in place.
Oh, I had to pay double.
Sure. So the next item on our agenda are the minutes from June 23rd, 2022. Thank you, Kim, as always. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Malcolm. Any discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none of votes on the minutes, Pedro?
Hi.
Jeremy?
Hi.
Malcolm?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Brandy?
I.
All right, item number three, site plan review for 84 Offered Road Bard College at Simon's Rock. This is a request for an additional extension, so a third, one-year extension of the site plan approval, which this board granted to Bard College through Pike Development Company on July 25th, 2019 for the related construction of a new dormitory building on the campus. And we see we have Mr. Morrison here representing our college. Thank you.
Yep. And Peter Cornell representing the developer.
Okay, great. Hi, Peter.
So the college is asking for an extension like colleges around the country. The pandemic hit our enrollment fairly hard from a high of 441 students, 348. We are since rebuilding, we're expecting 360 in the fall, but the no, it doesn't make sense to build a dormitory when we don't have the students to fill it, obviously, then we highly expect that in the future that we will have the students to fill it, but don't at the moment. So that's the purpose of the extension request.
Okay, thank you. I think that's pretty clear. Board members, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Anyone? No? So if there are
I'll move to to extend the approval of the site plan review.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Malcolm. Gentlemen, any discussion on that? All right, so we'll vote to approve the additional one-year extension on the site plan approval from July 25th, 2019 for the new dormitory building at Simon's Rock. Pedro, what's your vote?
Hi.
Jeremy, what's your vote?
Hi.
Malcolm, what's your vote?
Hi.
Jonathan, what's your vote?
Hi.
And I'll vote I as well. Thank you very much. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Right. Have a good evening. All right, item number four, site plan review for 116 Brush Hill Road, application from Deborah C. Mars and William Ryan, care of Kelly Granger Parsons Associates for a two-family residential use and for grading and clearing more than 10,000 square feet at 116 Brush Hill Road per sections 8-1 and 10-5 of the zoning bylaw. Looks like we have Mike Parsons on the line. Mike, do we have you? You're unmute?
Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, you should have me.
We we hear you now.
Okay. All right, so you can hear me, you can't see me.
Cannot see you yet, but um, but that's not essential. If you want Chris to put up the application, we could look at that instead.
That'd be great.
Okay, Chris, do you mind putting up the plan? And then, as long as you're narrating, Mike.
That's fine.
That'd be great. Thank you.
That's fine. Okay, there we go. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Deborah Myers and William Ryan, who own a parcel of land just under 11 acres and the west side of Brush Hill Road. Right on the Great Barrington Sheffield Town Line. The lots improved would currently with a single-family home down along the right along the Great Barrington Sheffield Town Line. Right there. And they want to put up a second dwelling on this property. Up in a position shown right there. Chris has got it. Yeah, right there. It's the front of the house is about 170, 175 feet from the edge of the traveled way. It's 147 feet from the existing highway sideline. It's going to be a single-family home, one-car garage on the north end and then the house as we have it shown and and the south side of that. We've gotten a curb cut permit from the town. We've drilled a water supply. They've drilled the water supply well. We have Board of Health approval for the septic system. We're gonna clear, or there has been cleared. By the time we got involved with this, I think most of the clearing was done. About 15,600 square feet. Maybe just a little bit more. We've kind of shown the existing tree line on our plan. We're gonna clear a little bit more along the driveway. And they've cleared up to the edge of the orchard. Which is on the south end of the house. And once you go south from that point, you're out in a lawn. So and I understand that from talking with Mark Rosengren, who's going to do the building, that they they will be planning some screening on the south end of the house and they don't really, which really only screens them from themselves. And they don't anticipate doing much more than that than what's clearing much more than what's cleared now. I've talked to Mark about maybe rotating the house a little bit clockwise so that we're not running across so many contours to kind of lessen the volume of grading that has to happen at the site. It drops off as you head north. So if you start on the south end of the house, you're going to drop six or seven feet by the time you get to the garage. So I'd like to see him rotate that and and try and mitigate that. The cutting and filling that has to be done. It's going to be on the crawl space or a slab. And we also sent you, they sent you the the building plans. I don't have the ability to share them right now, but
The house plans are in the application packet, I believe. Yeah, we've got a floor plan and an elevation.
We have them if you need to see them.
Okay, and I think that's that's what I have to say about it.
Mike, overall, do you know the size of the parcel?
10.92 acres.
10.92, okay.
And it's got 628 feet of road frontage.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that introduction. The only other thing I saw in 8-1, Chris, is about the building inspector being satisfied with repairs, renovation and construction specified by the applicant in their application prior to issuing an occupancy permit, but that doesn't seem to pertain to the approval we would grant, right? That's pertaining to conditions we might issue.
That's just a matter, of course, that yeah, there's nothing you have to do about that.
It's in the, it's in the 8.1.
Extraneous requirement of bylaw.
Okay. All right, Pedro, do you have any questions?
I don't have questions, but I I'd like to reiterate to Mike, it's it's a good idea to rotate that house and just the contours, but also to orient towards the sun a little better. And then I was hoping that the owners should be here because the way they're designing this insulation system on the roof is going to cause them some condensation. They've designed a ventless roof system that does not require any vapor barrier. Especially a polyethylene six mil, but it's not really zoning or planning. But if maybe Mike had mentioned something about that, they can check that detail. Because they'll get condensation for sure. It's meant to dry to the inside and with that vapor barrier, it's not going to happen. But I got other issues about the about the project, so.
Okay. I I don't think I can raise my hand here, but
Just go ahead and speak up.
Now I can. Um, I can't see who's in the audience, but I thought that Mark Rosengren, who's going to be the builder, told me that he was gonna attend this meeting. And I don't
I don't show him. I see a phone number ending in 185, area code 413, ending in 185. Not sure.
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, I'll pass that comment along, Pedro, that you're concerned about the vapor barrier and and the roof ventilation.
Yeah, and I'll second what Pedro said about the contours and maybe Jonathan will third it, but you know, the elevation shows the site as if it were on a flat parcel, and this is clearly not a flat parcel. So if the intent is single-level living, the site's going to require an enormous amount of fills.
Correct.
Do you have any insight, Mike, into whether or not the applicants would have any objection to that being a condition?
I don't have any insight into that, Brandy. I've only dealt with the with the builder.
Okay.
And we alerted him to the facts. We asked him to state where he wanted the house, and this is where it was staked, and we did alert him to the fact that he was going to have some issue with the grading around the on the grad end. And he said that he would build, they would build some retaining walls or something. Get creative is what he actually said to me. So that, you know, they're not they're not pushing six feet of fill up on that site. Instead, I could cut the other, the south side down a little bit. If if you do that, then you run the risk of water above it running into the into the space.
I think you have that risk regardless, just given the configuration of the property and the way it drops away from the road and the way we get rain these days is in, you know, tremendous downpour. So I'd really recommend some some diversion drainage on the south end of the of the building, just to keep water from running into the foundation.
Yeah, well, it's going to be a crawl space and a and a, I mean, it it looked to me like it was what I would call a crawl space, but he said it was going to be a slab, so maybe I'm not looking at it correctly, but irregardless, it's it's not going to be a full basement that's going to be wet all the time.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, Malcolm, do you have any questions?
Um, just doesn't approval of this again depend on the Attorney General approving the bylaw changes? Doesn't, isn't that covered by the bylaw changes from this town meeting? Second house on the property.
We
They could clearly create another lot.
Yeah, I think so.
It's the new bylaw, right? Into the existing?
Existing bylaw gave us the impression that you would have to have double the allowed zoning to put a second unit on, which which they have in this case. So yeah, I don't think, I think that's a good question, though, Malcolm.
Okay, so, yeah, good.
Oh, I do see Mark Rosengren there in the participants list, Chris.
Yeah, just just to Malcolm's point, no, I think the existing zoning bylaw as written as without the amendment that was just passed, I think it clearly allows this.
Okay. Anything else, Malcolm?
Nope.
Jeremy, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Jonathan, anything for you?
Uh, yeah, I just, in looking at the plan, I came up with the same thing that Pedro did, is that in this climate, we don't want to build houses that are built on a north-south axis. We want it built on an east-west axis to maximize solar. And and Brush Hill is notorious for being, it's a kind of a canyon, and there's not a lot of morning and afternoon sun, so the only sun they're going to get is in the midday, and it'd be just crazy to build this the way it's sited. It should be rotated about 90 degrees.
Thank you. Mike or Mark, do either of you want to comment on that? And Mark, since I think Chris is elevating you to speak, so you just need to unmute.
I just unmuted.
Great. Could you just introduce yourself for our record, please?
Hi, Mark Rosengren. And we do have a porch roof that we talked about solar, you know, that's, and that is facing south.
We're not so much concerned about solar necessarily, although that is a sort of a happy benefit. Our earlier comments had to do with the fact that the site is very sloping to the north and downhill to the north and and the elevations that were provided to us are sort of anticipating a flat one-level living scheme where you would move from garage to, you know, master bedroom on a single level. But and yet, the contours suggests about five feet grade change across the house. So our question to Mike, which he wasn't able to comment on, was whether or not you'd be able to rotate the house so that you were situated parallel to the contours instead of perpendicular?
I mean, it changes everything. I mean, the front of the house then is into the street, the garage is into the street then. Kind of I don't know, it's kind of a bizarre request, I guess, in my opinion. I don't know how to answer that right now without changing the whole plan around.
It's not really a bizarre request. I mean, you're going to have to bring in a large amount of fill, and we have to do a site plan review, and one of our criteria for site plan review is, you know, grading and stormwater management and the amount of cutting and filling.
Minimizing cut and fill, right?
And we don't have a civil engineering plan. We've got the site plan that Mr. Parsons prepared. And, you know, I would anticipate that you would have to clear like another, you may have a conflict between your north foundation fill and your proposed septic absorption area. If you're placing fill with a three-on-one slope out to the north of the property to bring the garage end up to be at the finished floor elevation of the main part of the house.
Yeah, I guess there's a lot of space there to the south, though, that a swell can be put to lower the house on the south side.
So you'd rather just cut down on the south side? We just don't have that information on the plan.
Right, yeah, I would, that's what I talked to Mike earlier about, just trying to get the, you know, if we need to lower the the house, we can swell the south end.
Do you, do you have do you have a finished floor elevation you're trying to hit that you would, you'd be comfortable sharing with us?
Yeah, I guess we'd have to work with Mike on the contour of, you know, what that ideal number is from what's there now.
Yeah, you've got a 900, a 902 and a 904 that go through the house, so probably something like 903. You were splitting the difference. You still with us, Mr. Rosengren? I think you're muted again.
Is Mike on? Can he answer that or not? I don't know if he could.
You've got, I I can't tell you what elevation to set your first floor at, Mark. It's not what I traditionally do.
Looks like, it's like, this is Chris, looks like your garage is about 896.
Yeah, so I was going to say, it looks like the garage is
Sorry, Chris, I was brought on.
Yeah, right through the front corner is 896. Is where you're going through the front corner of the garage and the the 900 contour goes through the south half of the house. So I'd say probably 901 at the southwest corner of the house is the existing grade now. So you've got five feet difference in elevation. Right there, so you gotta drop the house down and elevate the garage and try and balance that out. And I I don't know how far they want to clear or grade to the south. And Mark, you had talked about building retaining walls on the on the north side to to be able to raise it up to get into the garage. So that's, that's where we're at. I can't tell you what the answer is about a first-floor elevation.
Mark, you're muted if you're trying to offer any comment. Okay, not hearing any comment. I guess we can go through 10.
Sorry, it was breaking up a lot.
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
Did you, did you have anything additional to add?
No.
Okay, well, we'll go through 10.5 and we will see if there's anything else that comes out. So minimizing the volume of cut and fills, the number of removed trees, six-inch caliber or larger, the length of removed stone wall, the earth wetland vegetation, the extent of stormwater flow increase from the site, soil erosion and threats of air and water pollution. So I don't know about the rest of the board. I don't really feel like we have a good grasp on what the cut-fill volumes are going to be. I'd like to get a little more information on that.
I agree.
And whether or not they're going to cut on the south side or shift things to the south and avoid potentially filling on the north side and impacting the septic system. Number two, maximize accessibility and pedestrian vehicular safety, both on the site and accessing and exiting the site. So the town has issued the curb cut. Is that correct, Chris, or they've approved the entrance location? You've issued the curb. Okay. So I think that that is fine and addressed. Minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. Something that is applicable. Number four, minimize visual intrusion by controlling visibility of parking, storage or other outdoor service areas viewed from public ways or premises residentially used or zoned. I think Topography is going to offer all the screening that's needed. Okay. Any other comments there, board? No, okay. Minimize glare from headlights, minimize light glare into the night sky, minimize overspill into adjacent properties. Our our normal commentary here is just that lights that are installed be downward-facing and night sky compliant. And if you're going to use LED lights to have them be 3,000 Kelvin or less. Mark, do you have any insights into what light fixtures you're going to be using?
All the twilight light, you know, no, no twilight lights.
Are you fine if we have down, a request for downward-facing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, fully shielded downward-facing, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Minimize unreasonable departure from the character materials and scale buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and places. I think this is fine. Anybody else? It's consistent. Minimize contamination of groundwater from onsite wastewater disposal systems or operations on premises involving used storage handling or containment of hazardous substances. Did you have their Board of Health approval for the wastewater system? And any household amounts of hazardous substances would be very small in nature, so I don't think that that one has any outstanding issues. And then ensure compliance with provisions of the bylaw, including parking and landscaping. Which there are no, well, there is one special provision under 8-1, but I believe the one and a half, it's one and a half spaces, right, Mark? Malcolm?
Yeah.
That's met easily on the driveway and the garage. All right, so, board members, do we want the applicant to provide us additional information on cutting and filling and any kind of like site civil work that'll be done to create the house site, or do we want to ask for it as a condition that there be retaining walls or how do you guys want to proceed?
Well, I'd suggest that we, I mean, we don't always have complete plans when we approve these, but given the nature of how, what's going to have to be sculpted here, I I'd like to see a plan for how that's going to be done.
So ask the applicant to provide us a grading plan, Malcolm? Yeah, yeah, I could agree with you on that. Any other requests? Any other requests, board members? If we're gonna ask the applicant to come back at the next meeting, we'd like to send them away with a full list of any additional items that we'd like to receive.
Well, hopefully they'll entertain the idea of rotating it.
The grading plan may make that very clear. I don't know.
Well, just to be clear, um, Brandy, that the idea of rotating is not a hundred percent. You know, our suggestion is not a hundred percent contingent on the grade alone. It's really on the house being able to take advantage of whatever heat the sun will provide in the winter time to the uh, you know, to the the main front of the house. I mean, this is a kind of building design one oh one, wanna orient it towards the sun. To that, you better take advantage of these things. I mean, I understand that there's grading problems there too, which only you know, emphasize the, the request.
No, I appreciate that. I think it's a two, two-pronged issue then. So it's two issues. One is solar gain and the other is earthwork, cutting and fills.
To be clear though, you know, the, the solar gain is a design suggestion, which is not per view site plan. The earthwork is a different story.
Correct.
All right, the bylaw uh, really mentions the grading, but not the solar, but it's a good suggestion.
All right, so um, Mark, can you work with your design team to come back with a grading plan? That shows how uh, the cuts and fills are gonna be and how the water is gonna be managed on the uphill end? Um, so that we can better understand that as consistent with the bylaw?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Um, our next meeting is the twenty, is it the twenty eighth? Twenty eighth.
I mean, it doesn't have to be the next meeting.
It doesn't, that's true. If, if you were in a rush though, we would entertain this on the twenty eighth earliest.
I'll see what we can put together for you.
Great. Board members, anything else before we send the applicant back to that additional information? All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good night.
Yep, good night. All right, hold on, I'm trying to find my agenda again. All right. Um, item number five is our open discussion item on housing strategies. Um, Pedro had sent us around a uh, a narrative for consideration and um, Chris, I didn't get a chance to call you today just to run this up the flagpole, but I was wondering if we could have Pedro introduce it? And since it's such a specific topic, put it on our next agenda as a specific item? Does that sound appropriate?
Yeah, that, that would be, that would be fine. It, and if I could just introduce things a little bit more generally for the few folks who are in the audience, three of you. Um, this board has been talking, well, for years, working on regulatory and zoning um, uh, issues and trying to create more housing opportunities uh, throughout town. And this year, uh, there are a number of things that we started talking about last year, including uh, new zoning for Stockbridge Road and other places. Um, and looking through various aspects of the bylaw to um, make housing of different types uh, easier to produce and um, in some ways maybe incentivizing the production of certain types of housing. Uh, earlier this year, we did receive a grant of technical assistance from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. Oh, uh, Chris, thanks for joining us. Chris Brown, who's a staffer at BRPC, join us tonight. He has been working on this issue uh, for us, looking at not only zoning and regulatory issues, but also financial tax, other ways to incentivize the production of housing. Um, so uh, Chris is he- here, um, and we can chat a little bit about that. Uh, we can chat in more detail next time, depending on, on where he is or how much he'd like to, to share. Brandy, as you mentioned, uh, Pedro sent a, a brief memo around to the board about his thoughts about um, uh, regulations in the zoning bylaw, specifically site plan review relative to uh, housing production. So yeah, I think it would be totally fine for Pedro to bring that up tonight generally and, and put it on as a detailed discussion at another time.
Yeah, Pedro, are you good with that? But you're muted, Pedro. We can't hear you.
Um, I mean, if that's the direction you wanna go in, um, I believe I brought this up at the meeting, three meetings back, so it's like a month and a half ago. But if you'd like, I can review it again.
Well, I, if you wanna just briefly introduce it, because I have mentioned what it is, but I haven't gotten into the specifics. But I, I'd like it to be an actual agenda item. I'm not comfortable discussing something so specific without it being on the agenda. And it just came to us after the agenda had been published, so.
Well, in the interest of, of, you know, our incremental approach, it dawned on me that anybody wanting to come and put a second home on their property or to put an ADU on their property has to come before us for site plan review. So tonight, we got an example of, of a, of what, you know, that I guess causes, as somebody who wants to get into the business of, of building more housing on their lots. I'll make the example tonight that, you know, we're, we're having them come back to get us. And this is in site plan review, and so it's perfectly legitimate in, in my eyes. But we're having them come back for something that they are you know, should take responsibility for, for their own property, for their own use. Um, they're not building a public building. It's not going to be rented sort of in a public way, so it's a sort of private project. I'm not really sure why we would need to be bringing people back to this kind of thing. And the same thing with ADUs. You know, we've worked really hard on this board and with the town to get uh, approvals for up to three units on a lot, but we're still requiring people to come before us to do that. So I would just ask for some consideration on and if you read the memo, some consideration on what site plan review actually is, the legality of it, some thoughts. I had a conversation with a land use lawyer from Boston about two months ago now about it, and it was very enlightening. So that's uh, that's the gist of it, you know. Again, incrementally, I'm not asking for waving site plan for multifamily buildings or anything else. Just for these things that we have as, as of right in our zoning bylaw. Two dwellings, two family dwellings are as of right in every district as our accessory dwelling. So why should they have an extra sort of arbitrary review? That's my point.
So, so just to be clear, because the, these things are sort of sprinkled throughout our code, right? And so if I understand correctly, so that we can be clear for our agenda item next time, um, you're specifically looking at the um, residential use associated with additional dwelling units on existing single family homes or whoops, did we lose you?
What I'm, what I'm suggesting here is that we have certain housing uses in our use table that are by right.
Mm-hmm.
That's single family, two family and an ADU. And what I'm asking is for this board's consideration and waving site plan review for those uses that we have already allocated as by right.
Okay.
We'll put that on the agenda for next time.
That sounds good. So Jeremy, we're not gonna get into a discussion on this item, but if you had something else specific housing related?
Well, I just wanted to add to this so that we can discuss it as well, that it hits some of the things that we've talked about and um, around equity too. And this has come up before, like this is one of the um, this could be an impediment to someone that's not familiar with this type of thing to, you know, it might be daunting for them to um, to um, to create additional housing, yeah.
So, uh, Brandy, while I have the floor, if you, if you allow me, um, I also wanted to, you know, I think it's important for this board to have a discussion of item seven sixteen in the zoning bylaw, having to do with tourments for transient guests. Um, in lieu of the law that just passed town meeting and looking forward to what the future building code is going to require as of more likely than not, January twenty twenty-three. We've got a bunch of conflicting things in, in the town here that we need to deal with. So, and I think, you know, we need to have a discussion.
Well, I, and I think to, to that point, Pedro and Chris, I mean, we haven't, we haven't gotten into like, okay, what are we gonna work on for the coming year? And so I think that may be one of the the items. We usually try and, and tackle a variety of either housekeeping items or other initiatives. Um, we probably also have the uh, the Stockbridge Road District, we're in a position to move that forward. We had sort of tabled that one, given all the the, the time we spent on short-term rentals. Um, Chris, do you have any other, or Chris Brown, sorry, we got too many Chris's on the call today. Um, Chris, thank you for joining us. Do you have any other suggestions on housing strategies or anything you wanna share with us, um, since you've taken the time to join us?
I do. I've got, um, I have a, a brief PowerPoint that I can either present quickly tonight or I can just circulate it to you guys.
No, that'd be great. We'd love to have it presented. And I think the folks who've stuck with us online um, have interest in housing, so they'd appreciate that as well.
I can share my screen. Okay, that works. Um, yeah, so thanks for having me. Uh, Chris Brown, a planning planner with Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. Um, one of the challenges with working on housing issues uh, in Southern Berkshire County and kind of Great Barrington in particular is you guys have actually, your current zoning bylaws, um, and the ones uh, that have just been approved really recently have really set the table uh, for kind of incentivizing housing and really uh, setting the stage for housing to, to begin construction. Uh, but the realities of housing construction right now are mostly exogenous to local areas. Um, you know, just the market itself uh, is an issue. Out-of-town buyers are an issue. Um, even construction is an issue, finding people that are qualified to work on HUD-qualified projects. Um, these are all things that really can't be solved at the local level. Uh, so to me, if you want to really make meaningful impact in housing in this kind of an environment, you've gotta really nibble at the edges on one end. And on the other end, kind of go for some bolder, more innovative strategies. Uh, so there's a little of each um, in this slideshow. Everybody can see that.
And again, I think this is a good, oh, sorry, this is a great way to introduce the topic for maybe more detailed discussion at the next
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yeah, if there's anything that anybody wants to see developed more thoroughly, um, or just scrapped immediately, that would be great. Uh, so really the three areas that we were focusing on, can I now advance? There we are. Uh, so financial incentives, development programs and planning and zoning. And again, planning and zoning, I, I think that's going to be what we're talking about, doubling around the edges. Uh, you guys have a really good set of bylaws. Uh, there's just a few tweaks, I think, um, here and there. Uh, but financial incentives and development programs, there are a couple that Chris and I have talked about previously, uh, that we both agree would work really well. Uh, and I have interesting updates uh, for this particular one. Um, so this is basically based on a, a case study from Province Town, Massachusetts, uh, twenty years ago through a home rule petition. Uh, they adopted a policy of abating property tax for portions of um, properties that were being used for affordable housing. Uh, so the example there, just the easy math is if you've got a two thousand square foot primary residence and a five hundred square foot ADU, or even if you just have a two thousand square foot two-family building and five hundred of that is rented by a family that income qualifies, that portion of the building is just not taxed at all. So in this example, they would get a, a twenty-five percent tax exemption at the end of the year. Uh, it doesn't require deed restriction, which makes it more attractive to homeowners. It's basically something that they have to file on a year-to-year basis. Um, and because it needs to be filed on a year-to-year basis, only year-round rentals can be considered. You cannot use um, part-time rentals for this. Uh, and some of the interesting data that I got from Province Town. So they had thirty-two properties uh, participating in the program this most recent fiscal year, which is a hundred and thirty-two units. Uh, Province Town only has three hundred and eighty-five total rental units. So nearly a third of their, or I'm sorry, a little over a third of their landlords participated. And if you look at tax amount that was exempted, it's roughly eleven or twelve thousand dollars per unit, which works out to about a hundred dollar amount a month subsidy for an affordable house, which is an amazing value. Uh, there are very few programs that keep an approach that kind of uh, bang for your buck. Um, an interesting one that has had some traction recently, so starter home overlay districts were, uh, they were passed in two thousand and sixteen. Um, I don't believe that anyone has actually built starter home uh, in a starter home overlay district yet. And there was a really big uh, hurdle to that, which is being surmounted currently uh, in a bill that's progressing through the legislature. Uh, so just a quick overview of these, they require three contiguous acres of valuable land. You create an overlay district. It's a version of the smart growth overlay district. Um, starter homes have a specific definition, so it's up to eighteen hundred and fifty square feet, but you can also have a, an ADU up to six hundred square feet. Um, so you're kind of doubling down affordable housing and you're also making the home itself more affordable for the person who has the ADU on their property and is getting that income. And the municipality receive bonus payments from the state, I believe, is actually being amended with that legislation. Um, so there's, they're replacing that with something called a certificate of compliance. Uh, I'm not entirely clear yet what that means, but um, that's the most important update. Uh, the most important update is previously and currently uh, starter home overlay districts can only be located in what are called the, the traditional forty R areas. So they need to be near public transportation or public services, uh, which is kind of an awkward place to locate a cluster of uh, single-family homes. Uh, so that is currently being amended out of uh, the legislation. So you'd be able to put them anywhere uh, that you've got the space to develop those three acres.
Is forty, is forty R, is, is that our SCOT, Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
There were, so just to that point, this is Chris, uh, there were areas that we had thought about for a, a forty R smart growth district that did not qualify because of the state regs. And so you know, it's, it's good to hear, Chris, that the state is looking at um, relaxing that a little bit for this.
Yeah, this has gone pretty far. The, I think the original bill was introduced in January. Uh, it's been amended a few times as part of a, you know, a larger only bus, as most things are. Um, but it's, it's come out of the house. Um, so it's got some traction. Um, and then this is just kind of a rundown of uh, starter home prices from throughout the state.
I have a question about the, the essay, the, the starter home overlay district. Can that be contiguous with the SCOT? I mean, can we use our SCOTs for S, Shods?
Yeah, can our, can overlay districts overlap one another?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, this, these overlay districts specifically, you know.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. That is a good question. I had to look that up myself.
But, but you are required to use all of the letters in the acronym.
The show god.
God, these shods.
Okay, so there's prices. Um, oh, I'm sorry, I, I neglected an important part of the statistics I was showing you for, um, excuse me. I can't, I guess. There was an important um, policy change with the tax exemption program, but it's having a hard time pulling up for me. Okay, so this was uh, year one, so this was, I think, two thousand and three, when, when it was first implemented. A few people came on board and then it sort of petered off. Uh, in that year, they adjusted the AMI requirement, or I'm sorry, they adjusted the AMI that they use to calculate affordable housing in Province Town. Uh, it jumped up about nineteen thousand dollars and all of a sudden uh, almost every landlord in town that wasn't participating started to sign up. Um, and it's just kind of, it has grown steadily over time. So there, there are some nuance to these things.
So, so Chris, when you say they adjusted the AMI, they amended their local zoning to change what their AMI definition was for affordable?
Right.
So that was
Because you can't, yeah, you can't. That was my question too. I'm not sure that you can unilaterally change the HUD-defined AMI of your area. Um, but specific to this, uh, they just considered it on their own, uh, just administratively. That was where they kept it out at.
Okay, okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Uh, starter homes, starter home prices. Uh, this one is, so when Uh, start homes, start home prices. Uh, this one is so when I talked about the nibbles, this is the other end. So transfer development rights, uh, another quick overview of those, uh, typically create sending and receiving districts. You create an overlay for the receiving districts. Uh, the sending districts don't need to have an overlay. They're used for the protection or stimulus, so protection of areas that you don't want to see developed and then stimulus of development in areas that you do want to see developed. So Great Barrington, in this case, I I would imagine the overlay would be in the downtown. Um, the important distinction.
What's a what's ascending versus receiving? Can you uh tell people?
Yes, uh, so there be you're sending the actual development rights of your property. So if you have twenty-five acres of property, uh, and you have the rights to develop a certain portion of that, you can sell those rights. Uh, and then someone in the receiving area can purchase those rights um to develop something in the receiving area. The most common use is for density bonuses. Um, so a developer is able to build more units than they normally would be. Uh, that's not their only application, but that is the most common one. Um, and the two most important wrinkles that I think uh you would need to um kind of instill in this to using Great Barringtons and Southern Berkshires. Uh, so rights can be transferred between localities even without a county government. So you can create intermunicipal agreements. If you have areas surrounding kind of a regional downtown, which is a little bit of what Great Barrington is for Southern Berkshires. Uh, if you've got more rural areas outside that are really never going to develop and probably shouldn't develop. Uh, if you sign intermunicipal agreements, those can become portions of those places can become the sending areas. So you're drawing in more potential development uh from outside of your own borders. Uh, you also need to adopt intermunicipal zoning overlays. Um, so there's there are some quite a few wrinkles to this one. Uh, but then the other the other important piece is that these development rights can be held in a bank. Uh, so some organization, maybe the Affordable Housing Trust, um would be responsible for holding on to these credits so that the timing of projects can line up. Uh, very often with T D Rs, if a a bank isn't available or some kind of third-party pass-through program, development doesn't line up at the same time as people are selling the rights. So if there's some sort of banker, just a collection of those rights, senders can just sell those rights whenever they'd like. Um, and then as developers come in, they can see how many rights are available to purchase.
So have you seen any examples of this in Massachusetts, Chris?
I haven't seen examples of it in Massachusetts, but it is specifically referred to in several places uh on the D H C D's website, um on the Mass um Mass Planning Workshop website. Uh, so it's it's out there. Um, it's just it's one of these things that nobody has really tried yet. Um, I assume because it's a relatively big lift.
I I'm aware of one example in New York uh in Duchess County. Um, and they have a program, a town there has a program called Centers in Green Space where um they wanted to protect outlying agricultural land and and add to the the density of the areas that had sewer and water or that were near the village center. And I I've seen one project get built there. It it's probably the only one I can think of. So I was just curious if you knew of any in Mass, because I'm there'll be some nuances, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, all of the nuances. Um, yeah, they're mostly, most of these programs are adjudicated by uh the intermunicipal programs. A version of this program are adjudicated by a county government. So there are only a few examples where they aren't. Um, North Carolina does it uh in some places from Washington. But you're right, it basically creates kind of a virtual green belt around whichever area it is that you would like to see developed more intensely.
And and then as far as the the banking of credits, if you had a ten-acre parcel with half-acre zoning and you could get twenty lots on it, but you had these bank credits for X additional density, you know, you could potentially get, you know, twice that density or something. Is that kind of how that would work?
It's on a one-for-one. Yeah. And the the other part of it is, and this is something that a third party needs to do, you need real estate appraisers to come in and decide how much those credits are actually worth. Uh, they have to have a price point because some some organization is purchasing them and storing them at first. Uh, so you've got to find someone to evaluate those. And that's what that's where property appraisers would come in.
And if you're ascending property, does your property then have to go into like an A P R program or under a conservation easement of some sort?
It is a conservation easement, or it's similar to a conservation.
Okay, okay.
Right, because you assume that whatever development happens in the receiving area is going to be there for quite some time, so.
I suppose you wouldn't do an A P R then because you were, I don't, doesn't the A P R?
Because it's basically in perpetuity, right? So it it's a con conservation easement type or type of conservation easement.
Okay.
Or adjacent, I suppose.
That's interesting. Uh, would we be interested in exploring that, guys?
It doesn't happen in small towns very well, like Brandy, I know the town you're mentioning.
Yeah.
It's just too small of a market, so you have to has to be a little bit bigger. It works well in counties. Um, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, Montgomery County, Maryland, those are kind of the models.
Where you have then the bigger region to bank and protect from. Okay, that's that's good to think about.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you guys are a little unclear on how this works.
Um, well, we can get into the detail. Sorry, maybe we're getting too far into the weeds without it being a specific agenda item, but Brandy, I'll leave that to you.
Yeah, Pedro, if you have a question and.
I mean, just like a basic understanding of how this works. So I'm buying development rights from somebody who's like, I don't know, in an R two district. And I've got a property in town. I mean.
If you have a hundred acres in the R two, right, and you could get fifty units out of it, that's got a certain amount of value. And you would agree to protect that property in perpetuity with a conservation easement. And someone would buy your development rights from that property to be transferred to a place where it could be implemented as a density bonus. Somewhere where the infrastructure is more favorable to supporting that higher density. That's how I I've understood it.
Exactly. I mean, that's how I get it. I mean, what doesn't make sense is that how can some, I guess you'd have to you know, put some legislation in place that says that if you buy into this program, that zoning no longer applies or whatever.
This is an overlay. It's an overlay district.
Okay.
Essentially, yeah.
Sorry.
I I have a question. So in the receiving district, so you have to have evaluations on both properties, right? Because it's not like a one-to-one transfer, right? So like, it caught like the sending property, the value of a unit is something, and then the receiving property, the value unit something else, right?
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, it depends. So because the idea for this one would be intermunicipal, um, in it in the areas that I've seen that where it was county-wide, uh, they do have kind of a it's almost like a a conversion rate um for property values, depending on where where it's located in county. Uh, so if it were to be something intermunicipal like this, that wasn't being brokered by county, I think you would need the same thing. Um, so, you know, ten units uh in the outskirts of Sheffield is not going to work the same as ten units in downtown Great Barrington. Uh, so they would they would have to sort that out. But I mean, if you're buying, you know, in in the example uh that Brandy used, you know, you're probably not looking to add twenty full units to whatever your project is. Uh, and I don't think that you guys would approve that anyway. So you're just kind of buying it, you know, piecemeal. Individual developers, I think, will just be buying smaller pieces.
So it's just valued of values, valued of value, buying.
Okay.
You know, I'll just add that if if the members of this board are interested in this kind of program, you know, just look at the proposals that I put forth for Route Seven to increase density. And we can probably, you know, get just as much activity without all of the administration that needs to go into a program like this. It's basically what we're talking about here is designated an area with an overlay, which is exactly what I proposed probably like two years ago that will allow for density increases along Route Seven from Brookside all the way up to one eighty-three.
Yeah, I I think the only difference is that the the trade-off in this case is that you um add additional land and conservation in your community. And so that can be important for preserving farmland or um preserving oh important open space or protecting water bodies. So so, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Sure. I mean, I would I would think that allowing for for more housing and more activity to happen in dense areas would do that as well.
Yep.
But this but this way doesn't have the, because it could have some tax implications, uh, Pedro, your way, right? Whereas in this way, this way has less, right? Um, so by increasing like the density um available, you could um be increasing the um the value of properties as well, right? I guess in one sense, and maybe decrease in another sense, but.
Anytime you develop any property, you increase the value of it.
No, but I'm saying because the property now can be, um, so like if you have a property with a single-family home, that now you could put, let's say, eight units on, and then we changed the zoning, so now you could develop, you know, twelve units on it or whatever. And so, I mean, that could potentially increase the value of that property, right, before anything is developed.
Right, which is why selling the development rights of another property has value. But let's let Mr. Brown continue on with his.
Before he does that, I have a question about this.
Sure.
Which is uh just looking at my situation, my land is in is in sixty-one A. Uh, but I also have two building lots. Uh, each for the single-family house on them. Could I sell the rights to a second single-family plus an A D U on each lot to this? How how does that work?
It works however we would look to structure it.
I mean, that's John, if that's where that's where you'd be allowed to put on that property over there, or whatever the R two will allow, that's what you could sell.
Yeah.
What what that would sell for would be a question for an appraiser, right? I mean, that that's probably at that point, it might be that could be like a twenty-five hundred dollar sale. I I don't know what they want to pinpoint these things at, but that's it's a sliding scale based on, you know, obviously the the development potential that you're selling off.
Yeah, I think we should talk about this a lot.
Okay.
Um, but maybe like as an agenda item. So I I do have a lot of questions about this.
But I I would love if the professional planners would give us some advice as to whether or not it's scalable to our locale, and if we would have to scale it to like all of South County to have it make sense. Um. Because Mr. Rembold, I'm going to start using you guys' last names so I can distinguish. Um, I I thought I heard you say that it works better at a larger scale.
Um, it does.
Yeah.
Well, it's an urban, it's an urban planning tool.
So one of the two areas needs to be at a larger scale, right? But it works well if you've got a large-scale downtown area. Um, and it works well if you've got a large-scale rural area. Um, I'm not sure if it works if you don't have one of either.
Well, we need more um intermunicipal committees in this area because we don't have enough intermunicipal committees doing things, right, Jonathan? You'd love to be on a planning task force with Edgar Mott, Alfred, uh, Monterey and.
I can hardly wait.
All right, we'll let you, we'll let you proceed, Mr. Brown. Thank you.
Okay. There's just a a few more, uh, and this is more into the planning and zoning. Um, so one interesting wrinkle of the bylaws, uh, the Great Barrington's bylaws that currently stand uh three-unit housing is included with any multifamily, three to eight. Um, the state standard is breaking out for unit housing into its own thing. Uh, and that allows triplexes to be built in the same zones where you can build two units or two families. Uh, and they very often are indistinguishable. Uh, this is a three-family in Pittsfield. Um, just looks like a house that you would find near the anywhere. Um, and for your A D Us, there are a few towns, uh, when A D Us first get adopted, it's usually a slow rollout. Uh, and there are a few towns that have just adopted permit-ready A D Us. So you would still require site plan review where site plan review is required, but the building permit would basically already be approved. Uh, as long as the site plan was approved, that would trigger the building permit approval. Uh, it would have, it it doesn't need to go through it again. So typically what uh communities have been doing here is they'll open R F P out for a few architects. Uh, those architects will submit designs um for a variety of A D Us. Uh, and then you would just adopt one of them and offer them um kind of as a a platter really for homeowners to choose from. Uh, it takes a lot of uncertainty away from uh the developer's side of things that reduces construction costs and timelines. Uh, and it might incentivize homeowners if they can just kind of, you know, see what's there and know that they're not going to have an issue getting it approved.
This goes to the equity issue, too, of being able to build lower-cost housing units without, you know, reducing the barriers to entry. And so a lot of communities are doing that. The housing trust is beginning to think about it. I know some members of the public have approached me about accessory dwelling units and uh, you know, gosh, it would be so much easier if we had a straightforward program if somebody could look at our site, if we if we had a uh design ready to go, ready to permit, um, you know, in a very streamlined process, um, we might be interested in that. So.
Yeah.
Definitely add the existing dwelling to the to the next discussion.
Okay. And I think that feeds back to a a few of these ideas really kind of work well together. Um, if if that starter home overlay district amendment goes through, that's a huge opportunity. Um, and I think it's a really big opportunity for communities that have um some kind of a community land trust program, uh, which I know that uh Great Barrington has with Affordable Housing Trust. So if there is a way for the trust to be able to acquire enough land, which again is that minimum of three acres, contiguous acres, uh enough land to create a starter home overlay district that they then owned the underlying land and properties, buildings could just be sold off as they were completed. You've just created a a neighborhood that is going to be affordable in perpetuity. Uh, that's fully in community control.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then you can have A D Us on those properties, which is a part of the the starter home, and you've got all these pre-approved plans. It's just all kind of piece into each other.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to I'm sorry, I just wanted to add in one more thing. So there's um, there's the so there's the starter home districts and the way to to identify certain sites for development. But um, you know, Chris went fast through the three-family issue, which we'll come back to next meeting maybe. And the accessory dwelling in an issue with um, you know, if there's a way to allow three families and accessory dwelling units in more places rather than, you know, ten units here, twenty units there. Well, if we can get if we can scatter the units throughout the town.
Right.
People can build, you know, in a more um at at a rate and in a place that's comfortable for them. It it um yeah. Gives some heterogeneity to to the housing mix throughout town.
Yeah, no, I I like that incremental approach. Um, we've talked a lot about trying to create a variety of different housing types and that, I think, would do it. I like the approved A D U as well. Um, I think that would be helpful for some people. Uh, okay. A- a- any other thoughts, Malcolm? Anything from you?
No, this is very impressive.
Okay, great, Jonathan.
About to work on.
Is that the end of the PowerPoint?
I have no more slides.
Uh, could you send it to us?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that so that that was one of my concerns with when we were um when we were looking at the receiving and the sending. I mean, that is a way of uh eliminating three-family from, you know, areas or properties. Um.
Wait, I don't understand. I'm not following.
So if you're selling the development rights, right? So I mean, so are we not talking about selling the development rights on a lot? We're just talking about, um. So like, how would it affect like three-family by right? So if you have a lot.
The places that are able that are designated as sending areas that are able to sell rights are generally very rural and probably have some um even some natural resource reason to conserve them. Uh, significant national. So we're not talking about areas where, you know, they already have some some uh development. These are generally undeveloped areas that you don't want to that you want to preserve in some way.
Jonathan's the weird potential option, but like for Malcolm and Pedro and I, we wouldn't be able to sell that right to build an A D U and transfer that to to downtown.
The areas are very deliberately drawn.
No, but but that's kind of, that's still my point is so like when you're not like in the core and you have a single-family um property, and so, you know, by right now, you could change it into two-family and build an A D U. Are we talking about, so this is like Jonathan's example, are we talking about that ability to sell that right? You know, they change it into, we're not.
No, no, because there wouldn't be, there's not a mechanism for that. It's too small of a scale.
Okay.
But you might be able to more easily build an A D U if you had some pre-approved A D U plans, which is like halfway to where Pedro wants to go.
Yeah, I was, yeah. I mean, I definitely think like that hurdle, if we can get to quick, would be amazing.
Okay.
And it's it seems like you could write like that whole cluster idea that kind of went through. You could write, it it seems like that lends itself really well to, and it would probably be something that would be in that. Um, what did what is, well, the S Hod, no.
The shod, the starter home.
I think.
I think the SHOD. It's a really, really regrettable acronym.
Yeah.
I think S God's even worse.
You think? I I don't know.
I just, the connotation of the SHOD and, you know, it's a shoddy neighborhood.
Shoddy, yeah, I think it is. It's really regrettable.
How about like the new homeowner overlay district, right? It's not pronounceable.
There's nothing that says you must call it the.
Yeah, maybe we'll come up with something else. Um, okay, so that's great. Thank you so much, um, Mr. Chris Brown. We appreciate that and we look forward to hearing more from you. Um.
I will.
Guys, is there, are there any other housing strategies we want to focus on looking at? I know um, some of our notes over the last year have been like, is the PRRD reasonable? Is the OSRD reasonable? Like, do we do we want to rethink any of those as we're thinking about um, evaluating strategies for housing development moving down the line? Do we want to kill things that aren't producing any housing and take them out of the zoning?
I mean, that I, so I I I was, I mean, it's sort of not just housing related, but when we're looking at, um, well, when that went around about, um, uh, farms and using, um, you know, extra land for uh, farming. Um, so the PRRD doesn't allow that, right? Because that's open space, right? Um, so like the land that you're putting aside for open space can't be used for can't be used for farming, correct?
I don't think so. Think it can.
So it's still open space.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think it could still be used. It's, it depends on the character of the site that you're initially starting with, right? So if you have a meadow property or do you have a wooded property? And some parcels aren't going necessarily easily lend themselves to farming if they're already grown up in woods, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Rembold, are you able to put a couple of things more specifically on our agenda for next time as far as um, by right or evaluation of residential as a by right? Um, development.
Yeah, why don't, um, Brandy, you and you and Pedro and I um, email or or chat and we'll figure out which of these many topics to to list and discuss in some more detail.
Yep. Okay, that sounds great.
Or you can put them all on the agenda and just keep carrying them.
I think we want to be focused, right? Because we only have so much energy to put into this and we want to be, you know, results oriented, so. And we want to recognize that Mr. Remble has a limited capacity to support us and we, we want it to be quality.
All right, Brandy, if you give me, if you allow me a minute here.
Sure.
Um. You know, I keep, I I I hope I don't sound like I'm complaining to the board and to the towns, everybody, but I just want to bring up this list of items that I brought up before the housing subcommittee that, um, we could either move on or if they're beyond our purview, we could at least make recommendations and encourage the select board to move on. And I can send these out to everybody. You know, I've, I've brought up taxes and the financing, I've brought up residential tax exemptions for affordable workforce housing, sewer fee reductions, targeted density bonuses. I just mentioned the Route seven quarter rezoning, senior housing tax exemption, property tax exemption. But that's a different, uh, repeat that probably goes to that. Creation of a housing development position within the town to be able to administer all these great ideas that we've been talking about. Um. That person, you know, that position could also be a sort of outreach partner with um, CDC and construct to explore, you know, grant opportunities or other funding opportunities. Um, the establishment of grant programs for ADUs or like we just discussed, uh, a quicker uh, way to approvals for for accessory dwelling units to help the public who are interested. Um. Tax exemption programs for affordable housing. Uh, starter home grant program, municipal lending for housing development. I know that there's some work being done on that, or at least it's work has been done on that. Uh, transfer fees to fund affordable housing trust fund, short term rental, community impact fee, which we already we implemented at this town meeting. Uh, buyouts to short term rental conversions to long term rentals. I know, I, I'm going to hope that Chris is still kind of working on that as well as stipends for landlords to keep rents affordable. These are both programs that come straight out of programs in Colorado and a lot of these, Chris Brown, so if you know, a lot of these, I've been doing a lot of work for a lot of years on the, what's been going on, out in, um, in Provincetown, I'm in touch with Tucker Holland out there, who is uh, the, a person for which a housing position was created out there. And um, and he's doing great work out there. So it's, it's something that's, you know, proven, it's been done, we could do it here. Um, by right, presidential developments is what I discussed today, having to do with site plan review. And then, uh, you know, tax exemptions again for workforce housing. So there's a lot of stuff here that I brought up in that committee, it went nowhere. Um, some things did get pushed through. Most of this stuff needs to have action done by the select board. I would love to see, you know, some movement on some of these items.
Sure.
Was the basis of our request to be RPC for technical assistance.
Right, right. And and Pedro, um, you know, normally in the next couple of weeks, we would look at scheduling a joint meeting with the select board um, to talk about priorities for the coming year and and other issues. And I think in light of what you are probably going to mention under agenda item six on board and some committee updates that, um, you know, I should look to schedule a joint meeting. And Chris, I think you customarily have us also do a little bit of review on where we are in comp plan priorities that have some overlapping interest between um, this, the planning board and the select board. So, um, I should probably look to schedule that with Steve in the next few weeks.
Hey, Joe.
Well, look in the next few weeks, but don't schedule it in the next few weeks.
Joe, I I've, I've been told that you have elected to leave the housing subcommittee, is that?
If, are we, if we're moving from housing strategies, we can jump into board and subcommittee updates, Malcolm, and that would be the right place to, to bring that up.
Oh, reserve it.
Or we can just move into that item if everybody's ready. Okay, move into item six.
Oh, I have a, I have, um, so.
Everybody say goodbye, Chris.
Bye, Chris. Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Um, so are we going to discuss Pedro's list though before we meet with the select board?
Some of the items on Pedro's list, we are discussing and we brought them up and they'll be on the agenda, the ones that are specifically in our purview. I think if we have a joint meeting, uh, you know, there are a number of items that we have talked about, you know, tax things. We've talked about that for many years and we can't do anything with that. So we really need the select board to move on.
No, but I'm wondering, um, I mean, do, because, well, I mean, are we going to discuss it at all before we meet with them or just go based on our?
I don't know when we're going to meet with them, Jeremy, so I imagine, yes, we're definitely going to discuss it, but.
Okay. I mean.
I I really, I I think so, I feel very strongly about the fact that Pedro has been working for a long time putting a list together and it's it's very thoughtful and thorough, but I think we have to recognize there's a capacity issue. And so we should like maybe have a discussion that helps us focus on what we think are the most important ones.
No, that's, that's. Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
So that we have, because I think, I think that list might be overwhelming to present to the select board and, you know, if and if we all have different ideas of what's the most important things are on that list, it's going to be really chaotic. So if we can kind of come to something before.
Yep, definitely. All right, so are we in item six now? Board and subcommittee updates? So, so Malcolm, do you want Pedro to respond to your earlier question?
Whatever.
Go ahead, Pedro. Start with subcommittee updates if you're all right to speak. Do you need a minute? You want a minute?
Okay, um, okay. Yeah, so you're right, Malcolm. I, I feel like it's a good time for me to step away from from that committee and I, I would hope that, uh, we can elect somebody tonight so that that committee can continue the work.
Well, I'd like to volunteer for that.
Okay, great. That makes that easy. So does, uh, let's see, do we have to take any sort of action, Chris, on that officially? Make a motion or?
You, you do, and since there's the vote, you should list it specifically on an agenda. It's not an emergency item.
Okay, okay, so we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting, Malcolm.
Good.
Okay, so change in uh, housing subcommittee uh, membership?
Yep.
Great. Um, do we have any other um, board or subcommittee updates, Malcolm? I know you were coming from another meeting, so thank you for doing back to back.
The RPC organizational meeting and uh, it's pretty much same organization. Thanks to Pedro being part of the nominating committee, I'm still vice chairman.
I hope, I hope the check's in the mail.
I love you in the morning.
All right, good. Jonathan, anything for you?
Uh, no, not playing it again.
No, um, Jeremy?
Yeah, so I, I did send around that, um, the plan. I, I'm sorry, I thought I sent the plan before. And so this is a CPC plan, um, that we're going to discuss next week, Thursday, um, the twenty-first at five thirty. Originally I sent it around saying six thirty, but uh, we're meeting at five thirty and that's uh, usually when we start to, um, talk about the, start to talk about the plan.
Okay, and what the priorities are going to be for the coming year?
Yeah, and so I don't know if I could have anyone's comments, um, before that.
I would just like to thank the committee. I mean, we did a really tremendous um, amount of award to housing minded projects this last town meeting, so. I don't know, Chris, if you know off the top of your head what the dollar figure was, but it was a considerable amount, I think.
It was about six hundred thousand dollars from CPA grants.
I think that's great.
I'd like the committee is uh, very happy to say, um, that is really has to do with the applicants. Um, I think more than the committee, what projects are being brought to the committee. So I think we should, in that same sentence, thank the applicants for bringing those projects to, to the town.
Absolutely. Thank you for raising that. Okay, great. Um, Pedro, anything for you?
No.
No, okay, nothing on Lake Mansfield for me, so we'll move on to town planners report, Mr. Remble.
Sure, just a few things, um, in terms of remote meetings. Um, the governor's authorization or the legislation for that authorizes fully remote meetings expires tomorrow. Uh, there has not yet been a reauthorization passed, we hope. One, there are two versions pending in the House and Senate, and we're not sure which one will. Hopefully one will make it out and we'll see.
Chris, I just got a note from Tom Matusko that, uh, the State House News is reporting that the legislation has been passed.
Okay, great, so now.
Extend until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so now it'll, the governor probably has ten days to sign it and, um, will, will hope that he signs it quickly, quicker than ten.
Exactly, or in, in no man's land for the next ten days.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
Chris, that, does that mean remote meetings until next year?
That's.
Or hybrid meetings?
It means, uh, the, we could have remote meetings.
And you can.
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what the language is, but.
I, I don't think it means that you must have remote.
Right.
Um, the select board, uh, and town manager's office has been making the meeting room doing some preparations to the, to the meeting room at town hall uh, to allow for uh, hybrid meetings where folks can participate from wherever they are and will have much better audio visual facilities for that rather than the old conference call dial in line, remember when we first started.
Jonathan's cellphone.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's good.
So that's the remote meetings on the, um, you may also be interested to know that the select board at their next meeting, I think it's a special meeting this coming Wednesday will, um, open the proposals that it has received for the Houston School pursuant to the RFP. Um, so that'll sort of start the process of seeing what the proposals are and beginning to evaluate the proposals.
We know how many there are.
There are four, they'll become public once the board opens them.
Yeah.
And then finally, I know that the, um, the folks who were working on the McDonald's plan that this board saw um, at your last meeting, the site plan review application for McDonald's, there were some questions on the trees. And so, uh, planting trees along the Route seven frontage. So I know they are working on that with the tree committee and, um, I think they'll be ready to come back to you at the next meeting with a revised plan that includes the street trees.
May I ask something pertaining to the, the Route seven trees, Chris? Um, is there a way that we can somehow engage applicants in the tree committee more constructively to, um, facilitate the successful planting of trees? Um, rather than just the planting of trees to check a box? Because we've had several applications come before us, um, and I've observed a number of small trees be planted and then they just die and once they die, they pull them out and then, you know, that's it. And I just wondered if there's a way to build a partnership with the tree committee where they could provide watering bags to water the trees in and maybe provide a little bit of care and oversight for the first year or two while the trees get established, because that's a really sensitive period. And if you just dig a hole and plunk a tree in it, it's not gonna, it's not gonna survive and we're all wasting our time and our breath and our money.
That sounds nice. Let's talk about that.
Okay.
I nominate Brandy.
We like tree life streets, don't we? I mean, who doesn't? We want more of those sycamores. It's gonna take a hundred years, though.
Should we also consider trying to back off from twenty-five feet back to the original fifty feet that we had initially proposed?
Yeah, okay, I, I agree with Malcolm. I think we need to revisit that, that piece of policy.
I'm happy to look at it. I just want it to be successful.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just think that twenty-five feet is, is overkill, I mean, uh, especially if you have grown trees uh, over a number of years, it's going to be a tree wall.
But if you look at the corridor now, there's a number of really sickly ash trees that are going to be done soon, right? And so it's going to look a lot more open in the coming years and that's going to just increase speeds along the road.
I'm not saying we shouldn't have trees, I just, the twenty-five feet, especially for some of these projects that we've been doing, twenty-five feet was crazy.
We can look at it, sure, I'm open to that. Sorry, Chris, we deviated, um, as per usual. That's all you've got? Okay, um, all right, do we have any citizens that wish to speak? Me or Eileen or one eight five? You want to raise your hand? You have any commentary? All right, seeing no hands raised, we will adjourn at seven fifty-nine. Should have held on for one more minute, right?